Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Ashby, Hanson, and Cheniere will be absent this evening.
Right. If we could all please rise, I would ask Councilmember Harris to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good afternoon to everyone and welcome. We've got a busy agenda this evening. We do not have special presentations. We want to begin with the consent calendar. Are there any questions from members on the consent calendar, any part of the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move and say that I would like to make a comment on item number eight.
Okay. The consent calendar has been moved. Is there a second? Second by one of the gentle persons to the left there, Mr. Jennings. Your guest. There we go. Councilmember Harris on item eight.
Thank you, Mayor. This item has to do with service contracts for the city and the counties of Sacramento to collaborate on homeless services, triage, and a modified pit stop program. I think it'll be a really tremendous benefit to the River District. I'm grateful to the River District Board for approving it after much discussion, and I think that we can demonstrate that it'll have a very positive effect on the community.
Can you describe, because I think it's worth it for the public, because we've talked a lot about restrooms here, exactly how many additional restrooms it will provide and where?
I believe in the North A Street building, it used to be El Hogar, a mental health services facility. There are, to my knowledge, four full bathrooms in there that will be available to homeless people who are stationed in the area, camping, if you will, on the streets around Ahern, North A Street, North B Street. Tremendous population of homeless individuals in the River District, and it's been a perennial problem. The beauty of this program, Mr. Mayor, is that the city and the county are sharing the burden and the outcomes and collecting data. So it's a great way to provide services to the homeless and also to give them temporary respite in terms of use of the bathroom.
Excellent. Good work, by the way, Councilmember. It is important that we work with the county, and that is a step forward. Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Do we have any public testimony?
I have no public testimony.
Okay. All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That measure passes on a vote of six to nothing, required two-thirds on item eight, so all measures pass. Let us go right to the discussion calendar here and start with, I think, a very hopeful and inspiring step. I guess I'm giving away my vote there in terms of where I stand on item 10, and this is the 1717 S Street project. Dozier, and your team.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Louise Eller, and I'm a housing finance analyst with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The report before you requests approval of a $3,300,000 loan commitment consisting of $1,500,000 in city housing trust funds and $1,800,000 in mixed-income housing funds for the development of the 1717 S Street project. The 1717 S Street project is located between 17th and 18th Street on the north side of S Street. The developer is CFY Development, whose joint venturing with the Capital Area Development Authority. The proposed 159-unit property will consist of studios, one- and two-bedroom units. Of these units, 43 will be restricted to very low-income households, earning 50% of area median income or less. 36 will be 80% to 120% of area median income, and the remainder will be market rate. SHRA's funding will only be used to subsidize the very low-income units. The proposed development includes one six-story building with five levels of wood frame construction above a concrete parking podium. The site will include outdoor space, including a rooftop terrace, courtyard, and a community center. The project will also have long-term secure parking for bicycles and a bicycle maintenance station. In addition, there will be approximately 11,000 square feet of commercial retail space on the ground floor. Units will be equipped with a washer and dryer, and many will have private balconies. Staff has approved CFY Development as the property management company, and 15 hours per week of onsite resident services will be provided by Community Resident Services, Inc. In addition to the SHRA loan, the financing sources include a CaliJFA loan and a CADA loan in approximately the same amounts as the SHRA loan. In closing, staff recommends approving a $3,300,000 loan commitment for the construction and permanent financing of the 1717 S Street project. Cyrus Youssef from CFY Development is here with us today, and staff is available to address any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know that this has been a long time coming, and I just want to say what's in my heart and on my mind, and that is in memory of Ali Youssef. Cyrus, to you and your family, this was a big part of his vision, to create mixed-income housing in the core of Sacramento. And it's been a big challenge for us here. I mean, housing is booming, but affordable housing is a real challenge. And here you found a way, working with the agency, thank you, and to CADA, and to our city staff, and I know Vice Mayor Hanson, and Councilmembers Harris and Gueda and others have been very, very involved in this. We need to be doing more of this, and we need to find, seed wherever we can plant it to make sure we're doing more of this kind of project. And Ali will never be forgotten in our city. Never will be. Let us take public testimony. Do we have any?
I do not.
Well, we've got my colleagues here, Councilmember Harris.
Thanks again, Mayor. I'd like to say that I really appreciate your comments. Ali will certainly be missed for generations, really. He had great vision. Our issue with housing in the city, especially low-income housing, is one of capacity. So every time we get a project like this, it's a big win. Mike Heller, who developed ice blocks immediately behind this area, sent us a letter, and I think he couldn't have said it better in terms of what it will bring, how it will complement ice blocks, how it will bring more energy to that particular area of Midtown. I'd like to thank SHRA for contributing to the project. It's very significant. It is probably the project that will get us some affordable and very low-income units in the near future. It's the one that is going to get out of the dirt the quickest and get people into housing the quickest. So very important that it moves forward, and I appreciate everybody who works on it, and thank you to CFY very much.
Councilman Gueda, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the item hasn't been moved yet, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Go ahead. Very good.
And also wanted to thank SHRA and all the staff, and also Mr. Youssef for your commitment to this, and we had a great conversation about how we move these projects forward and clearly how we show as an example of what we can do in the very limited space we have, but also how this could be examples for other parts in our city. Councilman Warren's district, my district, and others have areas where we could benefit from this type of density to address our housing shortage. And again, you know, I think, Mr. Mayor, your comments were very eloquent, so with that, I'd like to continue to move the item and thank everyone for their work on this project.
Very good. There is no public testimony. Good to see you, Cyrus and team. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Just like that. Let's go build. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We now move to item 11, Commitment to Citywide Operational Efficiency and Effectiveness. I'd like to begin with some comments and maybe ask the city manager, actually, to, if you want, to weigh in on this a little bit. Yeah. Great to see you guys. So this may seem like a small item tucked into the middle of a city council agenda, but I hope upon reflection that this will be seen as one of the more important measures we take up as a city council this year. We obviously do not campaign here in City Hall. That would be inappropriate, but it's no secret that four weeks from tonight, we, the majority of the city council, are asking the voters of Sacramento to approve a sales tax here. So the purpose of it being to have the capacity and the ability to invest more in Sacramento's economy, job creation and housing, and in our neighborhoods. And it is vitally important to me, I know the city manager, and I think our entire city, that as we ask that question of the voters, we show and demonstrate a continuing commitment to making our existing city operations and city services as efficient as possible. And that's what this resolution and this work plan that is contained within the resolution seeks, in fact, to do, to recognize we have an outstanding city workforce, that people are working very hard, and yet we have an obligation to say, are there ways we can deliver services better? We've started. Truth of the matter is, since the passage of the original Measure U in 2012, the number of employees per resident of Sacramento has actually gone down, at least since the height of the recession, since the beginning of 2007. We are still, counting for inflation, including Measure U, we're still below pre-recession spending levels, barely, but still below pre-recession spending levels. So the city actually has done a lot to tighten its belt, but there's a lot more that we can and must and should do, respecting the taxpayers and recognizing the opportunities that are in front of us. So I'd like to turn it over to the city manager, maybe, to address a little bit of the specifics of how we intend to go about this, and we'll go from there.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the mayor and council asking for this item to come forward through the auditor's office. I am really looking forward to working with the auditor to bring on some consulting firm to take a look at our citywide operations, look for opportunities to create these greater efficiencies we talk about, and also looking for cost-saving measures as well, because there's different layers of how we can start tackling some of the fiscal challenges ahead. And I also want to mention that during the last recession, we...
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, we're in the middle of a meeting here. Thank you.
Thank you. During the Great Recession, we did have approximately a 20% reduction in our workforce, and we implemented a lot of cost-saving measures and efficiency measures that we need to really take a look at now, because it's a different day, and having this assessment done is the prudent thing to do. And again, I look forward to working with the auditor and our operational departments to make that happen.
Right. Thank you. Howard, is the auditor prosequoita? Welcome. Welcome back. Best to your family. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Still catching up on some sleep, but we're able to make it here tonight. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The motion that is before you is to pass a resolution affirming the city's commitment to continuously work to improve efficiency and effectiveness of city operations, to inspire innovation, to increase public trust, to leverage technology in an effort to improve service delivery and be good stewards of public funds. Over the next few years, the city will be challenged to address factors such as aging infrastructure, increasing labor and pension costs, and rising health insurance premiums. In turn, citizens are demanding government be more efficient, transparent, and accountable with taxpayers' money. In order to address the future fiscal challenges and affirm their commitment to improve city operations, on October 2nd, council requested the office of the city auditor, in coordination with the city manager's office, to return to council with a draft resolution to solicit services to identify and implement all reasonable efficiencies, productivity measures, and any other opportunities to address future fiscal challenges over the next several years. In this report, we have provided the council a potential scope of service and timeline for Phase 1 of the efficiency study, to include an overall written assessment of the city, an identification and prioritization of the top 10 to 20 opportunities for efficiencies, cost savings, or revenue-generating opportunities to facilitate resource allocation and development of the city's budget. We are aiming for this first phase of the efficiency study to be completed around April 30th of 2019. If the council so desires, Phase 2 of the project would also include a requirement for the consultant to work with the city manager's office to implement any recommendations the city council approves. I am available to answer any questions, should you have any.
Well, I'm going to turn it to my colleagues. Thank you very much. I want to thank Councilmember Harris, by the way, Councilmember Cheniere, Councilmember Carr, all who've participated in one form or another of establishing, beginning to establish the protocols that lead to this proposed action here tonight. Let me begin with Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll begin by moving the item this time.
Okay.
And I don't forget. You know, I'm very excited about this, and even more so because the auditor's office will be deeply involved in the whole process, and that gives me a lot of confidence that whatever path we choose to walk will have great oversight and a lot of guidance from a person who I consider to be not only fiscally prudent, but very wise as well. So Jorge, this is a really good thing for the city to do. It's actually essential for any municipality to self-assess and understand their processes and, you know, provide information to the constituents that we're doing the best we can with the money that we have. It's always an important guiding factor. So I look forward to the process, and hopefully this will pass and will get underway.
Very good. I'm going to add my thanks to Councilman Gueda as well, who's been a full participant in all of this. Thank you, Eric. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a no-brainer and really doesn't require a lot of discussion, from me, anyway, but the process that we're embarking on, I think, is a process that we can duplicate. You said the council asked you to bring this back, but it really wasn't the council. It was one member of the council. But by bringing it back, by having enough detail in the recommendation for action to be taken, is a model that we can follow, and we can use this for all of our individual requests. Statement enough detail that they come back to the council with the resolution, and if the council approves it, then the whole council is backing that process, is backing that resolution, and it's not just one member asking for a resolution and having the staff spin its wheels trying to figure out what they want. There's no spinning wheels here. It's clear exactly what the request is. So I applaud you for doing that, Mr. Mayor, and we're going to use this as a model to put in our protocol.
You know what? We aim to do it right. What can I say? Thank you, Larry. Thanks for pushing us. Councilman Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to work on this with you, and I want to do thank our city auditor for actually setting, I think, a high standard for every auditor in the state of California for when it comes to cities, and also our city manager on this issue, because I think what we're having these conversations as we've come together with our budget is that our city is a dynamic city and with many challenges that are coming up before us, and one that we tackle every night that we get together here and every time we meet with our constituents. But the question, I think, that we're hoping to tackle with this measure is, what are the best, most productive ways that we can manage our city? And to also take an honest, hard look, if the way we've done things in the past are the best ways moving forward. And I want to make sure that there's an acknowledgement that this in no way is a question whether we have hard-working city staff, because I think our city staff are, every day, trying to help us solve these challenges. I think what we're asking here, and hopefully with the work from the city auditor, is, let's get an external view to look at, are there different things that we don't know about that can help us be a better city? Are there ways that we can look at the way that our city runs every different program to make it more effective? And going back to the point again, we're a dynamic city where if the goals that we've set out with Project Prosper hold true, that we become a more, a city that brings in new businesses, that creates more private enterprise, that we can look at where all the different revenue inputs are going to be coming in, and when our expenditures are also going to be moving and flowing. I think those are the unique things that can come out of this, to better manage how we find every ounce of resource to tackle those big challenges. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to have been moved and seconded, but proud to support this item moving forward.
Very good. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that, you know, for my first several years in office here, I had a chance to work directly with Jorge and the city auditor's office as the chair of the audit committee, and have a high degree of confidence in the office to really help with the efficiencies of the city, and so I think this is a step forward for us as a city. And it's really a necessary step, I think, particularly in light of what's in front of us with, you know, some of the opportunities and challenges that we have relative to our ongoing budget and some of the concerns, and so I'm looking forward to receiving the work. One question I have for you, Mr. City Auditor, is approximately, how long do you think it would take you to come back with your initial findings?
Well, we're going to do an RFP for this project and have a consultant come onboard. Our anticipated release date for the RFP is October 26th, and we're hoping to include in that RFP a timeline that the consultants would be able to meet, that would have them reporting back to council by the end of April. And so that would be the timeframe to perform the RFP, select the consultant, and have them perform the work and report back to council on their findings.
So are you asking them in the RFP to define how much time they anticipate taking, or are you thinking at the end of April, they would have some initial findings?
They would have some initial findings for the council to consider and then provide additional feedback on whether or not they want to engage in a Phase 2, which would be then the implementation of one or several of the items that they identify as a potential source of greater efficiencies or increased revenues.
Right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just tag on to everything that my colleagues have already said. This is the right thing to do at the right time, to be able to look at all the options that are open to us, to have that external view, and to look for continuous improvement. That was a term that my old company, Xerox, taught me years ago about doing it right the first time and therefore not having to pay for it twice. And so I, too, support what we're doing, and I'm looking forward to it coming back. I would like to, at some point in time, have the conversation, and probably when it comes back is the better time to have the conversation, about this being a part of the Budget and Audit Committee, where we can look at this on an ongoing basis and a continued basis, where we're monitoring it more than once a year. We're looking at it on an ongoing basis when the Budget and Audit Committee meets, and then those recommendations can come from that committee to the entire council.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, maybe that could be one of the recommendations as well from the consultant from your office about how we can regularize the implementation of this process on an ongoing basis. I think Budget and Audit sounds exactly right, but maybe we could also get that as part of our recommendation.
Sure.
Okay. Jeff?
I just wanted to thank Farishah and Mike McKeever for your work on this effort. You've been integral from the beginning. You'll be working through the project, so thank you.
Icu? He's doing a great job on many, many things here. Thank you to everybody. It was a team effort. And Howard, thank you for taking this on short notice and really just going to work here. Really appreciate it. Okay? Good. Jorge, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. And your team, thank you. Okay. We still need to vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. That measure passes again unanimously. All right. We have one more item, an important item tonight, and that is item 12 regarding the McKinley Water Vault Project.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Bill Bousath. I'm the director of the Department of Utilities for the city of Sacramento. Before you tonight is a resolution certifying the EIR and adopting the findings of fact in the mitigation monitoring program, and also approving the preliminary design plans for the McKinley Vault Project. This is a project in a low-lying area in East Sacramento with historic flooding issues. Our NPDS permit requires that we improve the combined system and eliminate these flooding areas. A robust alternatives analysis was performed on the best way to do this, and this McKinley vault is the most cost-effective and efficient way to solve the flooding issues in the neighborhood. This project, as you can see, responds to a real and immediate problem. This is how the project is proposed, to sit in the park. To the east, you see 33rd Street. You see the pool up on the other side. This is an existing baseball diamond. It's a 6 million gallons of underground storage. It includes a below-ground odor control facility. It has been designed to reduce the impacts both on the community and in the park. It calls for the elimination of only five trees and for the planting of 62 trees. It includes, by way of improvement, a new picnic area, a new restroom, repurposed ball diamond area, new shade structures, improvements to the jogging path, improvements to the irrigation system, improvements to the existing restroom, among others. This vault, so this is the way the vault works. During significant storm events, water will flow into the vault. This will be the flooded water that you saw in the first three pictures. Instead of going into the street, it's going to flow into this vault, into this vault, and then when the storm is over, it will be pumped back into the combined system when there is capacity. This is proven technology. We have built three of these similar vaults. They've been constructed and are being operated successfully. The one that you see here is one that was recently built in Jasonier's district in Oak We did a significant amount of outreach over a two-year period. As you can see, the list of public meetings, there's been a significant amount of outreach in social media and through the media. We've received a lot of input from the community. We have responded to that input. As you can see also, the schedule moving forward, we anticipate construction beginning in the spring and lasting for 18 to 24 months. The city has complied with the California Environmental Quality Act, included notices that requested input regarding issues to be covered in the EIR. It included circulating the draft EIR and responding to all important environmental causes. questions in the final EIR. The mitigation measures included in the EIR have reduced all environmental effects to a less-than-significant level. The Department of Utilities will, of course, continue working with the community throughout the project to ensure that impacts and inconvenience are reduced to the lowest feasible level. By way of information, we've received a written comment letter from Brown Rudnick, a law firm that commented on the draft EIR. We responded to their draft EIR comments in the final EIR. In response to some of the issues raised in the letter, we believe that we have responded adequately in the final EIR to the comments on the draft EIR. We believed the EIR includes sufficient facts to enable the city council to make the recommended findings regarding impacts and mitigation. We agree with Brown Rudnick that the final EIR is required to respond to the significant environmental issues raised in comments on the draft EIR, and we believe that we have done so. We do not believe that the final EIR includes or included significant new information that would require recirculation. We have staff from the Department of Utilities and from the Department of Parks and from planning to answer any questions that you might have. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. I know we have a significant amount of public testimony here. I know I have some questions. Councilman Harris, I know it's your district, and do you want to wait till after the public testimony? I know I have a question, I think, that would be helpful prior to the public testimony, if I might.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, Bousath, I read the EIR and focused specifically on the alternatives considered, some which were dismissed from further consideration, and some which, which were considered as possible alternatives. And I don't know that I want to go through every one of them. You rejected, for, I think, understandable reasons, the separate sewer and stormwater systems. That was considered back when I was on the council in the mid-1990s and was rejected because of cost and feasibility. You reject the offline storage at McKinley Village, I think outright reject it for what appears to be good reason. Same with the offline linear storage. Sutter Memorial Hospital wouldn't solve the problem. But then you go to another couple that I'd like you to comment on, because you didn't outright reject them. One is the Sutter Middle School alternative, and of interest is the first sentence here on page 32 of the EIR. This alternative, quote, "This alternative would reduce flooding along Alhambra Boulevard and provide an overall reduction in flooding in East Sacramento, but provide minimal flood reduction in the McKinley Park area as compared to the proposed project." So I could read that, maybe I'm not reading it correctly, to say that there could be an actual greater impact, a positive impact, in all of East Sacramento, even if it were a reduced impact in McKinley Park. Am I reading that correctly?
So that, that issue, or that alternative, did reduce flooding in the area of the school and also in the, in the McKinley Park area. I'm gonna ask our folks here to make sure and listen to what I'm saying, and to make sure that they correct anything that I misspeak. The flooding problem that we're trying to solve with this project is the flooding around the McKinley Park area. It's one of the worst flooding areas in the combined system, and it is, it's a targeted, prioritized flooding area that we, that we need to solve.
Opposed to broader East Sacramento?
Yes. Now, there are other projects that we're going to be doing that is going to ultimately solve all of these flooding areas throughout the combined system.
So for McKinley Park, where you've identified the problem as the most significant, there is no alternative that would provide a greater benefit than the proposed project?
That is correct, and not only is it the most efficient and best solution to this flooding problem, but it was also the, the most cost-effective solution to that flooding problem.
You also described, just for purposes of history, and for people who may not know any of the history of this, the public health aspect of all this. You know, you have sewers, stormwater, this and that, pipes. What is the public health issue that's, that we're grappling with here?
So let me give a little bit more background, and that is, we need to remember that when flooding occurs in the combined system, it is combined storm drainage and wastewater, which includes an element of wastewater in that flooding. And so stormwater itself is bad enough, but when there's an element of the wastewater, then it becomes a little bit more of a, of a health issue. Back in the early 90s, the water, the state water board, through the Regional Water Quality Control Board, issued a cease and desist order and basically said, "City, you're not gonna do any more development until you can get a handle on this combined system and produce a plan that's going to reduce the flooding in the combined system." That plan was developed in the mid-90s, and, and a lot of money has been spent, and a lot of improvements have been made, and this is the next improvement that is going to be made. And yes, Mayor, the, the water that flows into the vault that would have been in the street, or could have been even in the homes, is going to go into this vault, you know, instead of the street, and then it will be pumped back into the system when there's capacity.
Thank you very much. Let's hear from the public on this, and I'll turn it over to the district council member, Councilmember Harris.
Mr. Mayor, I have 15 speakers on this item. The first is Terry Castagnas and Kathleen McLennan.
Councilman Emeritus, you get two minutes and 15 seconds.
And then Rebecca Webb.
Is that all?
He was kidding.
She's a former councilman. Come on.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I'm happy to be here and say hello to all of you. I'm going to give you a look at history. Sometimes it's a good idea to look at history to help you decide where to go. It was before the year 3000 B.C. that the ancient city of Nosos flourished at the center of the Minoan civilization on the island of Crete near the city of Heraklion. This modern city used cisterns and sewage-holding tanks and vaults and managed their wastewater, and it was efficient for the city's population. Fast forward to 1849 and 1850, when the city of Sacramento was where the city was built and modernized system combining the wastewater and storm drainage system was efficient to manage the city's population. During the raisin season, rainy season, however, the streets would flood, and the houses and the streets were raised five to seven feet above the ground to accommodate flooding. Fast forward to the 20th century, following the flooding that solved the city combined and wastewater system, and homes were no longer built on stilts, five to seven feet above the ground. In other words, there was a combined system that solved that problem, so we didn't have to build homes above the ground. Fast forward to the 1980s and 1990s, when Darryl and I sat together on the DS where you are today, and the city council, we looked at the issue, and there was a 1989 flood that many of you remember, where we stood on the banks of the American River in River Park, where the water was lapping at the very top. The city had grown past the combined system to accommodate drainage for that system, and we were told by staff that we could not separate the wastewater and the, and the storm drainage because it was too expensive. We could not do it. It would take too long to do. So the staff rejected our recommendation to separate the systems, to separate wastewater from storm drainage. It was the same issue today. So here we are, facing the same issue. The city has not solved the problem. The city continues to look at solutions that are over 3,000 years old. So what are we going to do? We're gonna adopt an inadequate system, and I can assure you, in the next 100 years, the city council will be looking at the issue and say, "My gosh, why can't we solve this problem?"
We do have the two-minute rule, and I, I-
I have one sentence, and I'll finish. Thank you, Darryl.
Sir, thank you.
It's long past due that the city bite the bullet and create a real solution to the antiquated system of a combined sewer and separating the storm drainage from the sewage system. This is the real answer. Please reread item number 11 that you just passed and discussed. Improve efficiency and effectiveness, increase public trust, and inspire innovation.
Are you against the proposal tonight?
Yes, I hope I made that clear. Yes, sir.
Pretty clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Great to see you.
Next speaker is Kathleen McLennan, Rebecca Webb, and then Diane Edwards. Kathleen, thank you.
Hello, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
This is tall for me, but I can do it. I want you to know my position at the outset, and that's-
Here you go.
Thank you. To please split the system.
Please what?
I'm glad to hear our former councilperson also was asking you to please split the system. That is the only way a world-class city can operate. I wanted you to remember, there was an EIR in 1996, and in that EIR, they were considering a, must have been a vault situation, and they said, "Development within McKinley Park, Williamland Park, and Oak Park was discounted as impractical due to potential opposition from local residents regarding traffic, noise, destruction of trees, destruction of park activities, and other construction-related impacts." I want to tell you about the life of the park. If you go to McKinley Park, there is the gamut of human experience. You will see joy, sorrow, solitude, intimacy. You'll hear bagpipers playing. You'll hear congos and bongo drums. You'll see the Sutter Middle School practicing their cross-country training. This is a park of children. Children run to look for the hidden fairy. There's the hidden fairy homes inside the trees, and the children run to look at that. You'll hear the cracking of the piñatas for the birthday parties. You'll see the photos for senior proms and photos for quinceañeros. If you do the vault, you'll have a disruption of two to three years during which an unknown number of trees will be removed or damaged. The park will not resemble its historical self after the fact. There are huge cement paths that are wide for maintenance trucks, cement picnic areas, both of which reflect Sacramento's summer heat.
Ms. McLennan, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Okay. I urge you to do the right thing and to vote against this project.
So I'm, thank you very much, by the way, since the first two esteemed speakers have both raised the same alternative, I'd like to, before we take the next witness, ask Mr. Bousath to come back up here and ask whether or not the staff has a cost estimate for what it would take to separate the sewer and storm drainage systems here in Sacramento. What would that cost be?
Our best estimate right now, what that would cost, is over $2 billion.
$2 billion? And what it would, and the way one would pay for that, I suppose, would be to significantly raise sewer and storm drainage rates on all city residents, correct?
Significantly. We have made an estimate on what it would take if it was just paid for by the wastewater fund, which, right now, our storm drainage fund, you know, is, is not available to, you know, to fund those costs. It would be about triple what it is now, the rates.
I was gonna ask you to translate, if you will, that $2 billion cost to the rate payer. What would it cost the rate payer in order to, in order to meet that debt obligation?
So our estimate is that the current rates would need to triple, and that that-
What is the current rate for a single-family home?
It's, it's in, it's in the $30 range. I think with our, with our last rate adjustment-
Thirty to $120.
Okay.
Okay.
And then it would take probably 20 to 25 years, realistically, to do that.
It would take 20 to 25 years?
To split the-
Yeah.
Yeah.
To split the system.
And it would, you can imagine the impact on almost every street, you know, in the combined system, which includes downtown, East Sacramento, and much of South Sacramento.
Thank you. Okay, let's continue.
The next speaker is Rebecca Webb, then Diane Edwards, and then Jennifer Cummings.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and people of the council. I stand before you as a community member of East Sacramento. I personally went out and petitioned the people of the community, people that lived in the community, people that use the park. We have over 200 signatures on our petition that oppose this project. People do not want their tax money going to this. People of the community love this park. This park is deeply cherished. You speak of health risks and the wastewater on the sewer, but in my experience, as a registered nurse, the air quality of this community is a bigger health risk. In my common sense, I would think that people see water and they don't touch it. Air we breathe every day. This is a personal health risk, and the people of this community do not want this project. Thank you.
Thank you for getting involved in your community and for coming to City Hall tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Diane Edwards, then Jennifer Cummings, and then Will Green.
Hello, the mayor and the city council.
Evening.
My name is Diane Edwards. What I think is the environmental impact is inadequately addressed, the construction impact to the surrounding neighborhood, the air quality. You're talking two and a half to three years, air quality, noise, traffic, parking. This is not an ideal location for this type of project. I think that, you know, looking at the, splitting the system, although it would be expensive and long-term, would be the best solution. This is a temporary solution, so I oppose this for the surrounding neighborhood. It definitely is going to affect the real estate values of the houses, and it's gonna affect the air quality, noise, traffic, parking, and it's a bad location. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Cummings, then Will Green, then Maria Nichols-Kelly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Jennifer Cummings, and I'm Secretary of the East Sacramento Preservation Neighborhood Association. Our organization represents over 350 residents in the McKinley Park and surrounding areas of East Sacramento. At our general meeting on September 26th, representatives of city staff presented the Vision Zero campaign, crime statistics, and homeless issues, and park maintenance issues. One of the speakers stated that our audience of more than 70 residents was very impressive and easily the largest community meeting he has attended in East Sac. ESP opposes the city's proposed water vault solution for flooding in the McKinley Park neighborhood. The city's proposal to excavate 25 to 30 feet deep to build a water sewer vault in 3.2 acres of McKinley Park will take about three years. It will disrupt traffic, quality of life, and safety of neighbors. McKinley Park is the most heavily-used and greatly-loved park in the city. It is a historic park awaiting national recognition. It is a historic park awaiting national recognition. Thousands and thousands of people from throughout the city recreate, marry, eat, play, and relax on its green lawns. The vault would hold the overflow runoff and sewage on rainy days so the streets don't flood, but its capacity during major storms is not proven. Sacramento needs updated, split sewer systems throughout the city. The building of the vault is a huge disruption and not really necessary. It's a patch. Unfortunately, our East Sacramento and older neighborhoods rely on an old combined system. It will take a lot of dollars to update our combined sewers to a split system, but it's something that a growing, modern city must do. Sacramento is one of only two cities in California that hasn't updated its system. Please do the right thing. Replace the system to a split system over time. Spread out the construction, like the water meters projects...
Ms. Cummings, your time is complete.
...and bring our city into modern age.
Final comment.
Sacramento deserves a fix of the problem. A split sewer and stormwater system is the solution. ESP supports this solution.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Will Green, Maria Nicholas Kelly, and then Susan Hennes. Mr. Green?
Good evening. My name is Will Green. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity. As we've heard, the problem is an old combined system for Sacramento. Mayor Steinberg correctly touts that we can be a world-class city, a destination city. However, if we do not have updating of our infrastructures, how can we really say that this is a world-class city with an old antiquated combined system? The solution here is to fix by splitting the system. The city has been told this ever since the 1970s. About every 20 years, you get another consultant, another opinion. The solution's with the system. Yes, we know it's costly. The can is kicked down the road, and here we are today, looking at, well, it's too expensive. If we keep kicking it down the road every 20 years, you're going to be hearing the same thing, and this gets a bit monotonous. Building the vault-after-vault approach is a Band-Aid approach. How much have we already spent on the three vaults already built? And then, over the next 10 to 15 years, more vaults, up to 20 of them throughout neighborhoods, I've been told, would be anywhere from $300 to $500 million. Well, this is a pretty big chunk of change towards the $2 billion, if that's the correct number. It's our taxpayer dollars that will be spent on the flawed system, and I don't want to see this money flush down the drain. We are all stakeholders in the proposed flawed project, not just a bunch of neighbors immediately around the vault. Public parks are not the right location for underground sewer-water vaults. McKinley isn't the appropriate place for the largest sewer tank in California. Do what is right for Sacramento's future generations. You are our elected officials, and you can be better stewards of our taxpayer dollars. It's time to stop the train headed down the wrong track. It's time to begin a permanent solution. A world-class Sacramento needs a separated stormwater and sewer drainage system. Let's begin.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Our next speaker is Maria Nicholas Kelly. Maria Nicholas Kelly, then Susan Hennes, then Judy McClower.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Steinberg, councilmember Harris, council. I'm Maria Nicholas Kelly, a longtime friend and neighbor of McKinley Park. I urge you to vote no on the vault project and EIR. I urge you to reconsider the safe, sanitary, permanent solution of separating sewage from stormwater. As importantly, I urge you to protect and to preserve much-beloved McKinley Park. The proposed sewer vault will destroy the historic George Buttercole Baseball Field and will negatively impact the eastern half of McKinley Park. Since its origins in 1871, the park has been intended as a place in nature, a sanctuary among trees, for respite, renewal, and recreation. The vault is a desecration of McKinley Park as a sanctuary space. The concrete, underground, two-and-a-half-story structure covering two acres will forever prohibit our heritage landscape. We must protect the sanctity of large heritage trees and their roots, free to grow deep and wide, to support expansive canopy, and to provide necessary shade and shelter for people, pets, and wildlife. Historic McKinley is where people come to smell the roses, to celebrate marriages, birthdays, memorials, to take time for wonder, and to give gratitude to the source of life greater than our own lives. Now is the time for responsible residents and representatives to commit to the necessary solution, a permanently separated sewage and stormwater system. And we must not desecrate historic McKinley Park. Now is the time to join together to preserve, protect, and to celebrate this site, which, on its merits, has earned the nation's highest honor for protection and preservation for many generations to come by its listing in the United States National...
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Yes. Listing by... In the United States National Register of Historic Places. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Susan Hennes, Judy McClower, and then Kim Glassard.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Susan Hennes, and I oppose the vault. Tonight, I will address concerns about the health of the trees in McKinley Park if the proposed vault project goes forward. Sacramento's Park Department discussed planting 60 additional trees as mitigation after the vault is installed. However, I could not find any language in the final EIR requiring this. The EIR should be amended to require planting 60 trees, as well as naming the species that are planted. The type of tree is just as important, if not more important, than the number of trees that are planted. Trees contributing to the historic shade canopy should predominate. Small ornamental trees should be discouraged. Another concern is damage to existing trees and their root systems. The EIR indicates that there will be no impact to trees because fencing will be installed along the tree's drip line. Mature trees in McKinley Park have a root system that extends well beyond their drip line. The EIR should be amended to consider and mitigate the effects of cutting through the roots of mature shade trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker... Next speaker is Judy McClower, Kim Glassard, and then Victoria Tranferan.
Before I start, is there a way to show some pictures?
Yes. Place them on the screen.
I can zoom in as soon as you start. Council, I'm here to talk about the issue of the traffic being diverted from 33rd Street on to 35th Street. Traffic is congested enough on H Street for a couple hours each day with the two commute times, and plenty of times during those hours, traffic is being diverted onto our street to avoid that backup there, as well as buses, whether they be medical transport, paratransit, school buses, senior or tour buses, none with business on our street, food, beverage, delivery trucks, trash trucks, construction trucks, including 18-wheelers of all kinds, including car haulers. They use this street all times of the day and night as a cut-through so that they can get from H Street to C Street. And with this diversion, it just means more trucks are going to end up on our street. We have asked for help in the past, and we have not had any reprieve from this. Our street has been marked with speed humps and with no truck signs, and nothing has been enforced, and it continues to happen. The truck people, when we talk to them, say they're using their GPS or the instructions they got from their employer. Things are only going to get worse for us on 35th Street with this diversion that's in... Being proposed for this project. It's... 33rd and 35th Street are the only streets that have a direct route to C Street, and with 33rd blocked, 35th Street is the only one that's there. This is a neighborhood street that children use to bike to and from school. With the construction flagger at 33rd for 33rd and McKinley, then there will also be further backup on McKinley Boulevard and from the truck construction trucks, which will then cause more traffic to use... And trucks to use this as a cut-through. We live here on a daily basis. We see this. We put up with it, and we've complained about it and had no... And up until now, have had no reprieve, and this project is only going to make it worse for us.
Ms. McClower, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Okay. We're not a truck route. We're a neighborhood street. This project needs to have better mitigation of this traffic issue, or better yet, a better solution for the flooding, not the second best. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kim Glassard, Victoria Tranferan, and then Rick Fair. Is Kim here? Yes.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm Kim Glassard and am an environmental scientist and director of Organic Sacramento. As one of the people of East Sacramento, it is perplexing that city staff are considering turning the historic McKinley Park, a notable Sacramento landmark, into a sewage storage facility and site. McKinley Park is over 100 years old and has served the Sacramento area since its creation in 1874, just 35 years after Sacramento was founded. Not only is turning one of Sacramento's few iconic parks into a sewage storage area a bad idea, but the proposed plan for the construction of the sewage vault is seriously flawed in its engineering design. With hydraulic park features of groundwater a mere 10 feet below the soil surface, along with placement of the vault being in the close proximity of the underground burn slew, a massive, often empty, concrete structure in an area of saturated soil will function essentially as a concrete boat and will be impossible to keep submerged for very long. As concrete boats float, so will the proposed sewage vault, which will become buoyant, bringing sewage waste and toxic sludge up to the surface of the park. Dealing with this misplaced, displaced, massive, 25-foot-deep, two-acre concrete bathtub will be a nightmare, and the vault will subsequently have to be dismantled and removed due to the health hazard it poses. Even a foot of shift from the vault's original position will cause pipe breakage and extensive sewage spillage. This public health nightmare will haunt the city for decades, and the subsequent required deconstruction will waste and divert additional tens of millions of dollars of precious city financial resources. It's time to replace the city's antiquated combined sewer and stormwater drainage with dual pipelines that separate the transport of sewage and stormwater to their respective areas. I'm requesting you vote no on the McKinley Park Sewer Vault and protect this pearl that we have in our city, and use our Sacramento financial resources wisely to create a real solution for Sacramento.
Our next speaker is Victoria Tranferan, then Rick Fair, then Chuck Cizakowski. Is Victoria here?
Good evening, city council, as well as Mayor Steinberg. As much as there, I would like to rebut some of the points that have been made pertaining to the actual plan or the EIR. I'd actually like to speak about more of our personal situation as living directly on the park. My husband and I live at the corner of 33rd and Park, and I wrote to all of you. I'm not sure if you had a chance to read it, but I'd like to go over just again what our personal situation is. It's not reflective of all of our neighbors, but I think that it's important that everyone understand some of the personal stories that should... That are weighing on this project. We purchased our house back in 2017 and spent the entire year renovating it. We gave it everything we had. We made ourselves very uncomfortable, but for us, it was worth it because we knew that this four-bedroom house was where we wanted to start our family. This is... This was it for us. It double-fronted the most charming little park, and it was everything that we ever wanted. Blast to the future, we learn about this sewage vault that's being proposed, and it's very concerning to us. Other than the potential damage that can be caused to our home, the other most troubling concern is the noise and dirt. Again, we bought this because we wanted to start a family here, and the amount of dirt and noise and just the general environmental impact of this project really makes it so that our goals of kind of starting our family are not particularly realistic. It's not a conducive place for us to do those things. It's extremely important to us that you understand our personal story and the personal stories of the rest of our neighbors as well. This project is far more than an inconvenience to us. It actually seriously jeopardizes our financial stability if we're unable to sell our home, and it interferes with our goals, as mentioned. So we just wanted to ask that if you truly care about the people and the lives that you represent, if there are other solutions on the table, if you have any reason to believe that the EIR is inconclusive, please vote against this measure and in favor of the lives that you're affecting.
Thank you for sharing your story tonight.
Rick Fair, then Chuck, then Richard Van Gruen.
Yes, thank you for considering carefully the issues, and I appreciated the mayor's remarks at the beginning, being inquisitive about the project, and I can appreciate you wanting to possibly express a vote of confidence for the staff and the direction that they're going, but I'm with the people who think it's the wrong direction. I'm glad that a lot of remarks have been made already about separate sewer systems, which are, you know, a 20th-century innovation perhaps, but we're long past that, and we missed several opportunities to get on that path already. I think that the... As a lot of people have expressed, the purpose of the project was, by an earlier presenter, I think, not what I saw in the DEIR. I saw the purpose of the project was to address local flooding, if economically feasible, and I didn't see anything other than that statement. I think if economically feasible means approximately, like ASAP, as soon as possible, which I don't know that it's the purpose of the project. The local flooding that one sees, and I was taken in by the graphics, like, number of people have been, and thought that the project was going to be somehow about initially when I was... In the first months of looking at the project.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We love the sounds of babies and children in our chambers. It actually lightens the heart here a little bit, but it might be a little bit hard for the members to concentrate and for the public to... We can certainly provide the media room, which is right back there. You're welcome to hang whatever you want, and if you'd like to stay, that's okay, too. I just trying to... I don't know. Respect everybody's participation here, that's all, including the baby. So go ahead. Okay. Thank you.
The local flooding issue is a consequence of a number of things, and I live 10 blocks away. The flooding at my house, which is... Corresponds with the flooding at the park. I walk to the park, and my nose tells me what's combined and what isn't pretty reliably either, some places in downtown where I can tell very quickly. Flooded over the period of time that I've lived. At my home, maybe four times since the 1980s, maybe five times. I mean, that's... I'm talking about when floodwaters actually got into the structure of the garage. Fortunately, not in the living quarters, but that water was from the separated storm system, not from the combined system, and the image that's shown on the cover of the DEIR is, in fact, taken in a location where there are three storm inlets that are from... That take water into the separated storm system. When part of the city's infrastructure broke, one of the department's directors came out and agreed that there were possibly some problems with some pumps coming on. There were operational difficulties and challenges. A lot of the combined sewer overflows, I'm assured, have been... Become largely under control. That's my understanding. So I find factual errors still in the DEIR that have not been addressed, and the final's been out only a short while. So I urge due diligence in... So I urge due diligence in looking very carefully at those alternatives as well, especially combined separating systems and having, as everyone, others, not everyone, but others have said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Chuck, and then Richard Van Green, then Nick Kufasamas.
Mayor, members of the City Council. I may be a unicorn, I live right across the street from McKinley Park, and I'm here to support this project wholeheartedly. A lot of the concerns that have been raised by my neighbors are very heartfelt, but they stem largely from a misunderstanding of the nature of the project. Once this is completed, the park will be largely returned to its original condition. The area to be disturbed is about 10% of the park, the rest of it will be available for use. The need to control floodwaters is immediate, the current situation is in violation of state water quality and federal water quality rules, and a separated system, if built, would impose construction-related impacts, not just on the people around the park, where there would be serious amounts of construction throughout East Sacramento. In addition, there would have to be additional construction through the rest of the city to convey that water to the rivers, and we would need to build a treatment plant for it because modern water quality standards do not allow the discharge of wastewater that contains gasoline, brake dust, tire dust, and lawn chemicals and other things to be directly discharged into the public waterways. So I think that the alternative of proceeding with the project, inconvenient as it will be, especially for me because of the traffic and noise, well monitored, seriously well monitored to control dust, it's a livable cost to ameliorate what is now a health risk in East Sacramento. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Van Guren, and then our final speaker is Rick Kufasamas. Richard?
That was me.
Okay, sorry, Chuck? Okay, thank you. Richard snuck in front of you. And then Nick is the final speaker.
Green up, by chance?
There we go. Okay.
Mayor Kussman, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this project. I'll be brief and hopefully hide my frustration. I live at 725 35th Street, which is roughly here. I bring this up, and I think Julie amply described the issue we have on 35th Street, which is we are, based on H Street, the only cut-through now between ourselves and the Elvis Freeway. We bought our house 25 years ago, I didn't understand that was going to be the supplement parking lot for most of the projects that have been put in the area, including the Mercy Projects and the businesses that have gone into the cannery, and the increased traffic through H Street. I have a daily routine, that is, I leave our parking spot in front of our house, I have my wife back her car into the struts so that we can at least reserve a spot in front of our house for parking. We have Mercy Parkers. Much as we've worked with Mercy to try to mitigate this, it's still easier for them to park in front of our house, as we are, us and 34th Street are the only streets that are currently, don't have two-hour limit. We made an attempt to get two-hour limit, we were told we were one tick off from getting two-hour parking, and wait a year and come back. So I guess, as it relates to this project, what I'm asking is that this, since we can see the proximity of 34th Street and 35th Street, how they weren't included in the traffic study is beyond me for this. The impact of these streets should be studied, the mitigation should be granted, and our recommendation is we are allowed to have two-hour parking so that we can freely use the fronts of our streets. And in addition, at the end of the street, adding on to here, towards the end of the street, it already is a tight turn, if we're going to have that much traffic coming down the street, we should do something about that corner also, including setbacks, so that people continue to don't get their car hit, as we've seen in the past. So our request is that the EIR be amended to include the impact on 35th Street and 44th Street with mitigations for two-hour parking and that specific corner.
Let's answer the gentleman's question here, please, in terms of whether or not 35th and the other street-
And 34th.
And 34th were included in the traffic analysis, if not, why not? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Tom Buford, I'm manager of Environmental Planning Services in the city of Sacramento, and I believe the question is specifically whether there was a traffic study that looked specifically at 34th, 35th Street, and the kind of impacts along there. I think the answer to that is no. I think there's two things that were going on. This is a, as we pointed out, not only a temporary construction project that will take place over two or three years, depending on the timetable, but they're also changing circumstances on a, probably a weekly or monthly basis. At one point, we'll have excavation, at another point, we'll have construction workers coming onto the site, and then at another point, as you start nearing the end of the project, you're going to have re-turfing and filling in and the like, and improvements. And I don't think it was really reasonable to think that we could predict with certainty how that was going to play out over a period of time. The other thing I'd point out is that the mitigation measure in the draft EIR included a traffic and pedestrian control plan, and that was intended to respond, again, to the changing circumstances that we expect at the site. Not only cars, has been pointed out, and trucks that are there now and that will be somehow moving about the grid and taking other routes that I really don't think can be predicted with certainty, but we also know that there are things going on in the park that will be disrupted for periods of time, for example, the jogging path, and we know that that's well-used, and we have plans to reroute that, and we're not exactly sure how that's going to happen, we're not sure the best way to do it, but that's going to be worked out. And we've got cars that they say we've got a grid system and will be moving around. So, short answer, no. Longer answer, I just gave you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, want to make sure that everybody here is heard, and their questions answered to the best that we can.
The last speaker on this item is Nick Kufasamas.
Kufasimas. Nick.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Nick Kufasimas. I am the vice president of the East Sacramento Improvement Association, and also, the last 22 years, I've lived at Parkway and Sedenez, which I call round zero of the flooding right there next to McKinley Park. My neighbor and I, back here, Art, have witnessed on multiple occasions the manhole pop-up and water flowing into our neighborhood and raw sewage on our front lawns, and having to explain to neighborhood children not to walk through the water because it is raw sewage that is coming out. I want to thank the city staff, they've attended multiple board meetings of ours and explained in great detail the process and the steps with the project. And what I'd like to read is the letter that our president sent to the mayor and councilmembers on September 13th. Members, Sacramento City Council, Mayor Steinberg, the board directors of the East Sacramento Improvement Association, ESIA, has voted unanimously to endorse the McKinley Water Vault project. We feel it as the most cost-effective alternative for reducing the risk of street flooding in the McKinley Park neighborhood, while improving the overall response of the city of Sacramento's combined sewer system to extreme weather events. The board also supports the proposed park improvements that will be made once the vault is complete, and asks that the city keep in communication with stakeholders and users to consider new park improvements ideas. We strongly encourage the city, the Sacramento City Council, to approve the McKinley Park Water Vault project when it is submitted for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, we appreciate it. All right, that is the public testimony, let's now turn it over to the City Council, we'll start with Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is an interesting situation that comes up often when we do big construction projects. Big construction projects seem to be very worrisome to constituents, and understandably so, because it does create inconvenience for the time of the construction. When these types of projects are finished, I would have to say as councilmember, I rarely hear anything more about it. It sort of fades from memory. In this situation, I'd like to first talk a little bit about the problem. I've lived in River Park and East Sacramento for the last 33 years. In that time, I have seen numerous flooding events and sanitary sewer outflows. These are serious problems, and they deserve a solution. So the real issue here is that some people feel that splitting the system would be a better solution. It is a possible solution if you had enough money to pay for it, but you have to understand the enormity of that type of project. It would tear up all of Midtown, almost all of Downtown, much of East Sacramento, Land Park, parts of Tahoe Park, for 20 years. When we talk about mitigating the impacts of the McKinley Water Vault project, it's a drop in the bucket compared to separating the system. I personally don't think that the city would tolerate that kind of disruption. Councilmembers, I urge you to think about what we dealt with for almost a year on the 9th Street sewer replacement. That street was pretty much occluded for eight months. It was an inline storage system, putting in big pipes. You know, it's a big deal to tear up the streets in your city. The amount of disruption it would cause would be legion, in my opinion. So in 1995, this very problem was addressed, and we have a former councilmember here who actually voted, I believe, for the CSSIP.
He did.
You know, cost is always an issue. If you don't have the money to affect a solution to a problem, you start looking for alternatives, something that will be effective and be cost-effective. And that's what the CSSIP is. It's a program of a series of projects that were approved by the council and by the regional water board to solve these sanitary sewer outflow issues so that we would be in compliance of our permit. And as long as we demonstrated reasonable progress along the line, they would take no enforcement action. And in fact, we've built a number of facilities and projects to ease flooding and issues caused by the combined system. To date, the CSSIP, the city has invested about $163.1 million since 1995. In that time, that we've improved Sump II, which is a major, major issue, that project cost $43.8 million some years ago, and it's been very effective. We've built other water storage inline and offline in the course of affecting the CSSIP, and all of these structures have materially helped the issues at hand. And as we keep moving forward with these projects, and there are 28 that are alluded to currently, as they get built, the problems shrink and shrink and shrink. There's another thing to consider here too, that I don't think many people think about, which is the rebuilding of the regional sand plant has created an opportunity for us in terms of their increased capacity and our increased capacity to actually move affluent to the regional sand, means that the combined sewer system is more effective these days. Not where we want it to be, but it is improved. The fact of the matter is, if we went for the combined sewer system separation, which many people seem to favor, we wouldn't see relief in McKinley Park for a long time. And in terms of the actually affecting the projects, not the park, would, you know, that's a small project compared to tearing up the streets. You know, we heard about traffic on 35th Street, well, the street would get torn up for a significant period of time, along with all the other streets, H Street. I've looked at the engineering on this, I've dealt with our city staff for over a year looking at the project, looking at the engineering, challenging our engineers, isn't there a different way, a better way, another place to do this? And my conclusion, after a year of pretty intense study, is that this is a good project, and I do support it. I'd also point out that your former councilmember, Steve Cohen, understood the necessity for this project, as did Josh Panay way back when. I have a letter of support, strong support from Josh Panay right here. If you take the time to understand the problem at hand and the range of possibilities to affect a solution, it keeps coming back to the McKinley Vault being a very successful project that will mitigate a very substantial problem. Another benefit that people don't realize, although Richard alluded to it, is that stormwater is in itself relatively toxic. It does pick up a lot of the chemicals along the way, and if we discharge it straight into the Sacramento River, that's not a net plus for the region. If this water does all flow to regional sand and gets tertiary treatment, when that water is then discharged into the Sacramento River, it is in fact clean. So this, interestingly, is better for the environment overall. As far as restoring the park, I actually have a bit to say about this. You know, I, since I've been councilmember, and before I was councilmember, I worked on the rebuild McKinley project. So we now have probably the most successful playground in the entire region. It's a destination playground and well-beloved. I put five months of personal effort into that, all volunteer. I'm very invested in this park. I've been councilmember when we reconstructed McKinley Pond. You might recall that there was substantial opposition to that project, and we did it, and the pond is in better shape than it's been in the 33 years that I've lived in the area. You know, I get it, it's not fun to have your park torn up, but it's a short period of time, relatively speaking, and the problem that it solves is very substantial. When the park, when the vault is completed, it will again be a ballfield, it will possibly be a multi-use field for soccer, because we're getting a lot of input that people would like that, but the park will be greatly improved. And like I said, I'm deeply invested in McKinley Park. We have big issues with the sprinkler system and water delivery in the park, and we can fix those. I get perennial complaints about the jogging path on low spots, and that it's muddy, and that people can't use it. We can fix that. We need more bathroom capacity in the park, we'll get that. As far as trees go, our arborist is here, I don't think, I feel the need to bring him up, but he has identified, I believe, five trees that need to be removed. They're all very small, and we will be replacing with 60 trees. Time heals these things, and McKinley Park is a beloved park and a very energetic park, so it will suffer for a couple of years, but in the end, a huge problem will be solved, and the park will be more than made whole, in my opinion. This is, this is a really good problem, I mean, good project to solve a big problem. It's problematic in terms of this, that a neighborhood is divided, you know? People see projects through different lenses, they have different concerns, but although the opposition has been vocal, I've spent a fair amount of time meeting with them and hearing their concerns, I believe they're addressed adequately in the EIR, and therefore, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the EIR, and take this project forward because, quite frankly, East Sacramento needs a solution to a big problem, and we need it soon.
It's been moved, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Carr, just like to weigh in, well, first I'll ask Councilmember Carr to weigh in, and then I'll weigh in.
I want to address the project, per se. Councilmember Harris took me around on our tour and explained the situation, and you wrote enough letters for me to really pay attention to this, and I will forward some to Councilmember Harris, but I just want to congratulate the people of East Sac, and the people who participate in maintaining McKinley Park. It really makes me jealous to see that much activity in that community, to see how you take care of the park, how you started the rose garden, how you completely refurbished the community room, all on volunteer labor when the city was in desperate need of resources and couldn't afford to maintain it. The neighbors stepped up and did it, and it's amazing to me, I sit in awe. Thank you for the way you presented your case, the way you pressed your case, the way, the emails that you sent, the letters that you sent. I'm just in awe of how you represented yourself and how you represented your neighborhood.
Well said, thank you, Councilmember Gueda. Thank you, Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I couldn't take the opportunity but to also acknowledge our former council member, Terry Castanis, and also, not only that, but thank him and for him and his, and our dear friend and late, his late wife Penny, who has changed a lot of lives and focused their life on education to folks over who've gone to Sac State, and particularly on the issue of literacy in libraries. And for that, I, you know, can't thank you enough. You know, and speaking of thanks, of also Sac State, I want to thank our staff, both Assistant City Manager Fran Halbachin and our Director of Public Works here, Mr. Busey, you know, both alums of the engineering program at Sac State, which I'm proud to be alum of, of that engineering school. And, you know, and I had a lot of thought about how we approach an issue here, and any student of engineering is always asked to look at the solutions, right? And, you know, it's never, you know, one solution. It's the alternatives, and then how you compare the alternatives. And in this situation, we see that our good engineer work here and also other folks have brought up and said, let's compete these alternat-, let's compare these alternatives. I think if this project was in nineteen ninety-six or nineteen ninety-five, after the city was reprimanded for its, the current system that it had, I might think differently. But where we are today, the investments and the approach we've gone to, to look at how we address the challenge that we have in the most efficient way, cost-wise, to me, this seems like the right approach. One, because we have looked at major investments in Sump Two. We've had a number of vault projects as well, who, you know, either have been the guinea pigs or the first ones to attempt it, but Oak Park, also, as the former council member, Josh Panay, pointed out, who lives next to the Second Street Vault and has been experiencing this. I think we see some hands-on, or some personal experience about how this, how these projects have played out. So, it's not the first of the project. Now, this issue about our current system, you know, think about a first-world country, Sacramento, wanting to be a forward-thinking city. This is a, the problem that East Sacramento is facing is something that my little village in Mexico, where I was born, in an adobe house, not having a functioning sewer system and having sewage on the street during a heavy flood or monsoon during, you know, El Niño era, that is a severe health situation. And we're presented with a solution that, in the very near future, we can attempt to solve, to prevent a catastrophe. I mean, the issue of illnesses that can come from that type of lack of infrastructure is something we have to take seriously. And having been a president from a neighborhood association, Mr. Mayor, you were the first president, I think, of the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association, I tend to side with neighborhood groups here, but in this case, we've got two neighborhood groups, one opposed and one in support. And so, I have to go back down to the engineering of this factor and say that I think that we've been able to find the best solution for this, given that, those challenges that we have. And so, I also want to thank Councilmember Harris. I mean, you've walked me through this project in detail, and I do take into consideration the impact to the park. Tahoe Park went through a major infrastructure project, which is only a third of the size, took about a year to do, replacing all of the infrastructure projects and shutting and quartering it down, impacting our water infrastructure, our plumbing infrastructure there. But you know what? I got to thank our city staff for being responsive to those needs. And I hope that in this situation, our city staff will be available and directly available, and I hope to everyone who lives nearby the project, so that any issues that come up during that construction project, they can have immediate and responsive feedback, because it is difficult to live next to a construction project. So, I, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll be supporting the item today, but I just strongly urge that the city staff be immediately available for any of the residents near the project.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Jennings, here you go.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Bill, could you come up for a second? Just a couple of questions. And my questions kind of start with the letter by former council member Josh Panay, and he says in his letter, "The Forty-Second Street Storage Vault in my neighborhood was planned during my service on the council representing East Sacramento and was completed in nineteen ninety-nine." He said, "It has had no problems with smell or any other issues during the last nineteen years." So, you mentioned when you came up that this is proven technology and that we've seen three of them built in Sacramento. Could you speak to the three, and if any of them were built before the nineteen ninety-nine year?
I'm pretty sure that none of them were built before nineteen ninety-nine. There's three projects that we've done. Forty-Second Street was the first vault that we put in. We actually did a tour with the neighborhood, some of the neighborhood residents of that vault. It's a vault that's underneath the street.
Mm-hmm.
Can't see it. Most people don't know it's there. It operates wonderfully without odors. Actually, there is an odor control facility that's not used. We had a similar situation where we have an underground vault at the Med Center, in the Med Center property, the UC Med Center property. It's a larger vault than the Forty-Second Street. It also has been operated successfully for, you know, for many years without odor complaints. It's another facility where we provided odor control facilities, but they're not used because they haven't been necessary. The third vault was the Oak Park Vault, which is about half the size of this vault. That was a vault that was constructed similar to this in an area that, well, not, basically, we included a lot of improvements with that vault, you know, a soccer field. That's the one vault that I showed the picture of. When you look at it, you can't tell that it's there. It's operated well. So, we've had good success, you know, with these vaults. They work as they're designed to work. They've kept flooding off of the street. They haven't been fully tested yet, at least Oak Park hasn't. But Forty-Second Street and the Med Center have seen some significant storms. They're operating the way that they designed. They're keeping water off the streets, and they've been successful projects.
So, the last question I'll ask you is, for some people, they feel that this is a patch. It's a Band-Aid. And my immediate question is, how long do we expect the vault to last?
That's a good question. I would say that the design vault, the design life of the vault depends on the different components. The actual vault itself should have probably, you know, seventy-two, hundred-year lifespan. There's elements of it that include, you know, pump stations and things like that that are probably going to need to be upgraded and replaced maybe every twenty-five to thirty years, like a lot of the facilities throughout the city.
Sure.
But the vault itself is a concrete vault, and it's going to last a long, 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 long time.
So, in your opinion, this is not a patch or Band-Aid approach? Okay?
And if I may, I'd like to just speak to one element that Councilmember Harris talked about, and that is, cost was not the only issue. When we decided, when it was decided by city council and by the Regional Water Quality Control Board to move down the path that we're moving down, cost was a significant issue, but water quality was also a significant issue. Right now, as Councilmember Harris alluded to, ninety-seven percent of all of the rain that falls in the combined system goes to the regional sanitation and receives full treatment. That's not the case anywhere else in the city. If the system was to be separated, that would not happen. You know, that storm drainage water, sewer would go there, but the storm drainage would not, and it would go, you know, it would go to the river largely untreated. So, that was one of the reasons that the Regional Water Quality Control Board agreed that this was the best course of action, was not just from a cost standpoint, although cost is significant, and we've talked about that. But it was also a water quality issue for our, you know, for the quality of our local rivers.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because when you came up and talked about this being the most cost-effective, my question to you was, if costs were not under consideration, what would be the best system to put in place? And then also, what would be the most timely system to put in place? Because many of the speakers spoke to the disruption to their neighborhoods, to their home, to their quality of life, to the park, and all the other things. So, if we took costs out, and we had two billion dollars, is the split system the most effective, or is the vault, from your standpoint?
From a water quality standpoint and from an environmental benefit standpoint, the road that we're on is the best road. I just don't, we have never seen separation of the system as a viable option, you know, from a cost and from a feasibility standpoint. It was, actually, when we first got our cease and desist order, it was the first option that was explored, and it was the assumption that that's what we would do. But as we looked into it in those early nineties carefully and looked at what that really meant to, you know, to separate those systems, we, you know, were instructed by the city council and by the Regional Board. This was a decision that was not made by the Department of Utilities.
Right. It was a policy direction in nineteen ninety-five. I can't say I remember it exactly, but I...
It's a long time ago.
I'm sure there's a tape out there somewhere.
So, I'll finish up with, I'll just finish up with this. I heard that the park was built in eighteen seventy-one.
Say that one more time.
I heard that the park was built in eighteen seventy-one, and you showed me pictures of people on cars trying to get through the water in two thousand nine, cars that weren't built to go through that kind of water, and boats in two thousand twelve. And I would imagine there's a whole lot more pictures that you didn't take time to show of the other floods that have happened in Sacramento. So, we know we have a problem. And I think the solution that we have in place, that's being recommended, that's been put up for vote, the vault system that can be done in eighteen to twenty-four months is an effective system that is working in Sacramento. I think it's also a system that is cost-effective, but even without the cost, taking a look at it, it's an effective system for making sure that the water gets to where we want it to get to and that people's homes are safe. So, we've had three of them that have been built, and they're all working and doing well. They provide safety. I appreciate everybody that's been passionate about their life in East Sacramento, the letters, the people who are here tonight, the people who provided written testimony. I know that everybody loves the park. I love McKinley Park, love going there with all my heart and soul. And everybody believes that they have a solution. Councilmember Harris has convinced me in our conversations, and I've pushed him on this, that the solution that we have in front of us is the best solution at this time, and I'll be supporting the motion.
Very good. Thank you so much, Councilmember Harris, again.
Just a brief comment, Mary. You know, people have characterized this project as a sewage tank and a toxic waste dump, fairly negative connotations. I would hope to allay those fears and at least let the public know that this vault will only be in play truly when there are very large storm events that overwhelm our system. At that time, a mixture of mostly stormwater runoff and some sewage will be in the vault. It will be retained for the minimum amount of time possible. It might be ten hours, probably a maximum of thirty-six hours, and it will all be pumped out. Nine years and nine months out of every decade, the McKinley Vault will be dry. It will not be producing any problems for anybody. There will be no toxic effects. There will not be odor issues. I really wish that many more people had come on our bus tour of the existing facilities. For me, it was very instructive, because I had not seen them all. We got to actually look down inside the Oak Park Vault and the Forty-Second Street Vault. You know, it's pretty benign. Once they're built, you're not going to know it's there, and it's not going to influence your daily life. You know, again, you know, solving problems causes a little bit of inconvenience and pain, but once that's over, we will have solved a huge problem. I have many friends who've had their basements flood repeatedly with raw sewage. In fact, at the public meeting at McKinley Park two weeks ago, a couple of people came up to me and vocalized strong support for this project, because they know it's going to solve their issues of having sewage in their basement. So, that's it.
Okay. In summary, I'll take the last word. Thank you very much. I thought it was very good public discussion, the kind of public discussion we should have. All the members articulate, especially Councilmember Harris, she's laid it out. To me, you know, there are some issues in public life, you know, that are easy, I mean, just because they strike at a particular value you bring to the job. Many issues like this, though, require the weighing of legitimate arguments on both sides, and you have to weigh, and then you have to make a decision. And as I weigh this, as I've listened very carefully, I want to acknowledge the concerns of the neighbors here. I think that's something to take into account here. The inconvenience, the acknowledgement, of course, McKinley Park is a jewel of the city. I love McKinley Park, and that's very real. But I do think that the importance of this project far outweighs even the inconvenience here. First of all, it's eighteen to twenty-four months. It is not permanent. Secondly, it is undeniable that there is a public health issue at stake here, and that, talk about a sewage dump, or that's what you have the potential of having now without the project. That's what the flooding brings. So, this is a major public health risk, and then, I don't know, I know a lot of the good people in East Sacramento, and the question of fiscal stewardship and cost is a very real one, just as it is throughout the entire city. But I don't know how you compare thirty-five million dollars to two billion dollars. I don't know quite how to get around that, especially when there is an alternative that will last, as I just heard, seventy to one hundred years and solve the problem. And then, Councilman Harris pointed, I think, very eloquently, maybe under the category of be careful what you wish for. If we were to do the separated systems, the complaints from many of you and many of your neighbors about the much broader construction and the impact on East Sacramento and McKinley Park and the entire city, I think, would be much greater. So, it's cost-benefit here, and that's the way we make decisions. And it doesn't mean that everybody has to agree with them, but I hope people feel tonight that this was a very thoughtful discussion and that we are weighing the merits here and coming to the decision that we think is best for the city. I also am an "aye" vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say "aye." Aye, opposed, abstain. That passes on a five-to-nothing vote.
Yeah, and for the record, Councilmember Warren is recused from this item.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate you coming tonight.
The system is rigged!
Oh, please. Okay. Thank you for coming. Appreciate your participation. Understand the disappointment. As we did last week before we take comments, public comments on items not on the agenda, I do want to take council member ideas and questions. I know I have one, but I will wait for the members to go first here. Councilman Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two announcements. Both of them are for Thursday, October the eleventh, the monthly Sac- The monthly Sacramento Youth Advisory Council meeting will take place at Valley High from 3:30 to 5:00. Sacramento Youth Commission is a youth-led commission and advocacy group whose mission it is to protect, preserve, and enhance the quality of life for the Sacramento youth by advising the city council and the public on issues related to youth policies, programs, and opportunities. We encourage you to send your youth to these gatherings. The conversations had at these meetings will only assist and benefit our community. Once again, that's Thursday, October the 11th, at Valley High School from 3:30 to 5:00. And also on Thursday, October, October the 11th, City Hall in your neighborhood. My office, District 7, will have City Hall in the neighborhood at the Prairie Elementary School. It'll take place in the library from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We encourage you to come, especially if you're unable to make these meetings on Tuesday. If you feel like it's too far to come or you can't, don't have transportation to get here, we encourage you to visit us at City Hall in your neighborhood, October the 11th, 6:00 to 7:00, Prairie Elementary School Library.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four announcements to make. One, to help improve the safety and increase community activity, we're having a Nielsen Park Cleanup Day. It's going to be this Saturday, October the 13th, from 9:00 to 1:00. Nielsen Park is located at 7596 Center Parkway, just off Center Parkway and Tangerine. We're going to be providing a barbecue lunch. Please register online with the, go into the website of Health Education Council, Health Education Council, or you can call 916-556-3344. That's 916-556-3344. They need to know how many hamburgers to bring and the like. After we leave there, we're going to the multicultural Family Health and Safety Fair at Hampton Station. It's at the Hampton Station Community Park, and that's going to take place on Saturday the 13th. Right after you leave Nielsen Park, you go over there from 10:00 to 4:00 to enjoy that community fair. Entertainment will be provided by local artists and groups, and safety presentations from the fire department as well as the police department. And you can also learn about healthy eating. Hampton Station is an epicenter in the district for neighborhood gardens, and almost everyone has a garden in their backyard at that place, and they're really into it. After we leave there, we're going to the 55th Anniversary of the 24th Street Baptist Church. Hard to believe they've been there for 55 years. They'll be celebrating both Saturday and Sunday, October the 13th and 14th, from 9:00 to 3:00. Both of those events at the 24th Street Baptist Church on 24th Street, just north of Meadowview. And then an event that the mayor attended and I attended and had an opportunity to speak, the California Air Resources Board has designated South Sacramento a priority area for air pollution control. That means that we are one of 10 communities statewide that will get additional air quality monitoring systems that will position us to get clean transportation investments and mitigation pollution. This sets the stage for new measures to come to the district to reduce emissions, including investments in the community for cleaner cars and cleaner trucks. Very big honor to get that.
Good work. That's a big deal, South Sacramento.
One of 10.
One of 10. And that may bring more investment to South Sacramento. Good job. Good job. Councilman Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a few District 6 events. The Friends of the Colonial Heights Library will be having their fall pancake breakfast. We hope you'll join our office and the Friends of the Library at Colonial Heights over on Stockton Boulevard and 21st Avenue for some pancakes, but also supporting literacy and supporting our libraries. Also, the First Annual Tahoe Park Spooktacular will happen on Friday, October 26th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Tahoe Park in conjunction with our monthly food truck event. But we're going to join a number of parents who are going to have some fun festivities, activities, live music, and costume contests. And then finally, we will hope you'll join us, and Mr. Mayor, I hope you'll join us for the annual College Neighborhood Association Meeting-
I will be there.
-on October 11th. Good, good. At, at Station 10, at 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., so I hope you'll join us there. And then two items for our city manager. Number one, I'd like to request that we bring back to law and legislation some cleanup and clarity on the urban ag ordinance specifically related to the industrial and manufacturing Currently, right now, urban ag can be allowed by right from our past ordinances, and there is some ambiguity whether that can happen in vacant spaces and in the industrial zone. And we're trying to maintain some of those industrial spaces for manufacturing, and we'd like to make sure we clear that up so that we can protect the, our work, place zones for industrial work and the manufacturing zones. The second item is regarding the issue of cannabis enforcement. First, I'd like to thank our Police Department code officers and our City Attorney's Office for all their work they've been doing on going after the illegal marijuana grows in the area, and, and also for the civil prosecution and assessment of, of some of the folks who have been violating those areas and converting our neighborhood residences, residents into illegal marijuana grows. And I'd like to bring back to law and legis, for discussion of policy that we can use the fees that are collected not only to recover the costs of enforcement, but to ensure that we use some of those funding resources for education for youth about the illegal use of cannabis, and also for mitigation of the communities impacted by it, particularly after a home is left vacant. And wrapped in with that, how we abate those homes. So those two items, cleanup on the urban ag ordinance, and then the second is follow-up on cannabis policy, if we can get those on the law and legislation law.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Thanks again, Mayor. The Gardenlands Northgate Neighborhood Association will meet this Thursday, October 11th, 6:30 p.m. at Stanford Settlement at 450 West Del Camino. This Saturday, October 13th, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. is a bicycle festival in the River District called Rio Velo. It's at Township 9 on 7th Street, the 7th Street Promenade, which is a really nice part of town. There will be daredevil stunts, live music by unsupervised, a bike rodeo, bike safety, electric and jump bike test rides, so if you haven't ridden a jump bike yet, you'll be able to do it for free, food trucks, and a beer garden this year. I went last year and it was an awful lot of fun. The artist who is doing the public artwork for the new Fire Station 15 will be reporting back on his work at the Natomas Community Association Meeting this Wednesday, 10:17, 6:30 p.m. at South Natomas Community Center. River Park Neighborhood Association meets next Thursday, October 18th, 7:30 p.m. at Fremont Presbyterian Church. And lastly, the Two Rivers Trail Community Meeting will be held on Saturday, October 27th, from 10:00 till noon at Caleb Greenwood Elementary School Multipurpose Room, 5457 Carlson Drive. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you so much. I, I too have a request. Actually, I have two requests that I'd like to make tonight. I know we've talked a lot lately about making our city more business-friendly and streamlining our various permit and development processes, and both of my requests tonight center around doing just that. The first is a request to the city treasurer. I know he's not here tonight, but I'll make sure that we communicate directly with him. I would like for the city treasurer to significantly expand our involvement in the so-called RISE program. This is an economic development program that essentially invests in our local community banks, who in turn commit to loan at least 50% of their funds, those funds, back into our local businesses and development projects. This program really puts our city funds back to work in our local community and is a great economic development tool for us to foster business growth. We're talking about inclusive economic growth, we ought to use our local banks as much as possible. Our treasurer has already started and done great work launching the program, and I know he's already working on expanding it, but I just want to go on record to reiterate my strong support for significantly expanding the RISE program and to do so as soon as we possibly can. The second is to the city manager, if I might. I know in a couple of weeks, I believe potentially October 30th, that we're going to come back to the city council with the, with the first of several of the permit simplicity and fee relief ideas that we talked about in our housing workshop several weeks ago. I would like to add one that I think is common sense and that would make a real difference. And this is the so-called Permit Simplicity Program. We can always learn from other cities here, and this is a program that many of our neighboring cities use to allow for one-day permitting. It's one-day permitting, which we hear about all the time. Just this past summer, the city of Elk Grove, our neighbor to the south, utilized the program to secure a building permit for under 24 hours to locate a large new employer they recently recruited from the Bay Area. I know we currently do offer this program in a very limited fashion, but I would like to see us commit to fully implementing the program, just as the city of Elk Grove has. What would it take to take our smaller pilot and make it much more robust? I'd like to ask the city manager and his team to bring back an implementation plan for the program, please, and to identify any resources that are needed for our city to fully embrace one-day permitting, just as with efficiency tonight, where we're sending a signal and then following up. I'd like to do the same thing here with, with permitting, please.
Mr. Mayor-
Those are my two requests.
I'd like to echo your, your support for that approach. Three years ago, shortly after I became on the council, we had asked that of a previous city manager to look at permit simplicity, and, and I know we've made some great strides, but again, I'd like to work with you on that, on that approach and echo your support.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Carr.
On the RISE program, you requesting that the city treasurer come back with the resolution for the whole council to adopt to commit to-
Yes. I would like him to come back with a, with a resolution that, that seeks to expand the program, and then the council, of course, can consider, consider whether to support that or not. But there's some things that just are intuitive and make common sense here, and the idea of investing in local banks and then the return to the local projects as we're investing in inclusive economic development, it just-
As you described it, it makes sense. I just want the whole council to be behind it.
Absolutely. Of course, it would come back to the entire council, for I am just one member. Exactly right. Okay. Councilman Warren.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I just wanted to commend you. I think your direction on this RISE program, I think, is very significant. I think it is showing and leading by example, and I think helping to continue to support our local businesses and our banks in return, they will have the ability to do more in our communities with local businesses is the right approach. And, and I think that is the, the direction that we should be looking on programs like this and other ways to support our, our local economy. So, and I share Councilman Carr's approach that it comes back and the entire council adopts it. But I think your acknowledgement of it is a very strong statement, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Warren. Thank you, everyone. If there's nothing for, I'm sorry, we do have-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have 12 speakers for public comments-
Oh, I forgot. Yes, we do. Apologize.
So let me remind the public that, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules or procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website. A copy's in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker does have two minutes to address the council, and as I said, I have 12 speakers. The first is Robert Copeland, Joyce Johnston, then David Andre, then Chris Rogers. Mr. Copeland? I don't see Mr. Copeland. Joyce Johnston? Following Ms. Johnston is Chris Rogers. Sorry, it's David Andre and then Chris Rogers.
I loved what the mayor has been saying tonight. Good evening to you all.
Oh, thank you. Please come back more often.
I'd really rather not, but I want to, I do want to express a lot of enthusiasm for everything I've heard from you. And I am bringing you tonight a project that, as I heard the list being read off, I believe it offers all the same amenities of the 1717 S. project. It's a mixed-income neighborhood. It will be affordable infill housing. And I'm only asking for a loan guarantee of $0 million for this. I actually don't need a loan. I am, I want to build this on my own property at my own expense. All I need is a building permit. And for that, I need the city planning office to follow the existing law as it's written right now, and they won't do it. They are demanding that I first pay a couple thousand dollars for a hearing, which they are not allowed to require as part of an accessory dwelling unit, secondary dwelling unit process. Government Code 65852.2. No discretionary hearings are permitted. This would be a wonderful candidate, a wonderful system of projects to do for the one-day hearing that you have in mind, because there's no reason they can't do this in one day. There can't be a hearing. The neighbors don't get to say, "No, we'd rather not." If it meets the standards under state law and city code, it's approved. But the city is refusing to do that and insisting that I first have to pay them a couple thousand dollars for this discretionary hearing that's not allowed. And despite offers and promises to help from Vice Mayor Hanson, his chief of staff is now telling me that he's only authorized to start to draft a proposal to maybe start following the law. Maybe in a year or so, they'll be ready to actually do that. And meanwhile, planning continues to demand the hearings that they're not allowed to require. I don't know why nobody is willing to tell planning they need to follow the law as it's written right now. But I've been on this project for a year. I spent, I had four long consultations with planning. I went through their laws. I understand them. I know how to read laws. I'm a retired lawyer. And I had long conversations. No one ever brought up till my builder went to get the permit. Well, you can't actually build it at the same time.
Johnston, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
But some of that was praising the mayor, so I should get an extra couple seconds, I think. What I need is someone to ask the city planning office to follow the law as it's written now.
Okay. City manager here?
I understand that we've been, you've been working with city staff and have assistant city manager Fran Halbach can follow up to see where we're at with this, because there's been several meetings, as I understand it, along with-
There's been one meeting, and the upshot of that is the city will think about coming into compliance with the law maybe in a year or so, but they, they want to continue violating the law while they propose to come into compliance.
So maybe we can have that discussion offline to see where we're at right now.
Yeah, we've tried that. It's been seven months.
Well, you got an offer to try it again, and right away. Okay, so we won't, yeah, Jeff?
This is a relatively simple project of an accessory dwelling unit over a garage. I'd like to personally offer my help.
I would love that.
So please give my office a call tomorrow.
I will do that, sir. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
808-7003. I, I think there may be a solution.
I hope so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is David Andre, then Chris Rogers, then Gillian Rogers.
Hi, good evening, city council. I came here today to talk about the survival gear that's been taken from the folks at Ahearn. I want to know, does city council know that the police department has somehow been directed to take sleeping bags, coats, and blankets, and water bottles? That's survival gear. I can see if the stuff's in the street, but this stuff was taken from the sidewalk area. There's no place for these people to go, and cold weather's coming up. It takes a lot of volunteers, a lot of doing to furnish these sleeping bags and blankets. And if the police are going to take them, we need a better way, something to do with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, David.
Chris Rogers, then Gillian Rogers, then Michelle Ann.
Good evening, city council. Happy mental health- Happy Mental Health Awareness Week. This week is dedicated to fight and dispel the stigma of mental illness. And I agree with the sentiment, but if we want our children to learn that mental illness should be viewed with compassion, then adults need to practice it with actions instead of just words. Because right now, children are being terrorized by violent vagrants in Sacramento, and it's being ignored. For instance, two weeks ago, this man was sitting by the toddler sandbox in Land Park, mumbling to himself. Earlier that day, he was in front of Tarrack Cafe screaming, running into traffic, and scaring customers. My neighbor had a three-year-old little boy with her. He loves to sit outside at the Tower Cafe patio, but she said no because they had to eat indoors. She felt it was just too dangerous. At my Girl Scout meeting last week, two of my 11-year-old girls told me about what happened at Vic's Ice Cream that day. Vic's, a spot all the kids like to go on Fridays after school to hang out. A tall, angry vagrant was threatening to punch people and yelling at kids. He stood directly in front of my girls, staring at them angrily and mumbling to himself. The Vic staff motioned for the girls to step away and come inside the ice cream parlor with the others. They all cowered inside, waiting for the man to wander off. On September 29th, two transients attacked customers at the Mexican restaurant in Caesar Chavez Park across the street. One pulled a knife on a manager, another threw a glass bottle at a child's face and injured him. Because of these interactions, how do you think our kids see the mentally ill now? How can kids develop compassion when these are their experiences? I urge you to see the absurdity of highlighting this important week and ignoring the real work of managing it on our streets. We have to stop teaching our kids that it's okay to be victimized if the person's mentally ill or homeless, that they have to modify their behavior, like not sit outside and eat ice cream with friends after school. That's not how you teach compassion, and it's lazy and it's dangerous. Other California cities have reports of violent vagrants stabbing people in public spaces. And I worry that we're not far off from the same kind of story in Sacramento.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for coming, too.
Jillian, did you want to speak also?
Go ahead.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Jillian Rogers. I'm in sixth grade at Cracker Riverside Elementary School, and I would like to talk about my experience with the homeless and mentally ill. Once, one homeless man started to run down my street. There are at least five little kids down Sherburne, and this man was yelling and screaming, scaring little children. Another experience was there was a man trying to camp out at my school during the weekend. Now they have chose to close down the school during the weekend, even when kids are inside playing with their parents. Also, friends and family at Vic's Ice Cream have been threatened, like my mother has talked about. At the river, when I was nine years old, there was a man behind a fence with a metal pole. He was threatening and banging on the fence. He was threatening to kill people and hurt them. And there was another little child that was younger than us behind us walking by. Then I... One day when we were coming back from doing errands, there was a woman with a metal pole banging on things, yelling and screaming. We were scared that it might damage a car, that she might damage a car or someone. And I also hope that you fix these problems. Thank you.
We are, first of all, I want to thank you for coming to City Hall tonight. It means a lot always to hear from anybody, any adult, but especially when we hear from a child, it means even more. And you should never, ever have to experience what you've experienced. I'm sorry. We are grappling, like other cities in our state, with a growing homeless problem. I promise you that we are being very aggressive about trying to make it better. We are investing a lot of resources in trying to get people sheltered, which is ultimately the solution, because while law enforcement has a role, and certainly when people act in ways that are threatening or that are inappropriate, that they should be cited and arrested. There's just no question about that. But in so many instances, the criminal justice system can't be the solution to this problem. So we're trying to house people. We're trying to get the mental health services through the law. I wrote back in 2004, Prop 63, to many of these people. We've gotten a little over 500 people off the streets over the last year or so. The problem is, we have to multiply that by 10, I think, to really have an impact. And we are working on it. And, believe me, every day, this is the issue that is foremost on my agenda, because we hear from a lot of people like yourself. But please, don't give up hope. Please, don't look down upon people, which I know you don't, who are living with severe mental illness. It's up to us collectively to try to make it better, okay? I really appreciate you coming tonight.
You very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Michelle Ann, then Tracy Mapes, then Andre Royster. I don't see Michelle Ann. Are you, Michelle?
No. Are you, Michelle?
Thank you. Sorry.
No, following Michelle is Tracy, then Andre.
It says 32 seconds, or...
You have two minutes. Go ahead.
One of the concerns that the population doesn't know about, that I would like to share with that lady, is that pharmaceutical companies give people drugs that make them homicidal and suicidal. And money is more important than people. Greed, okay? That's why those kids went through that. I have witnessed people's personalities absolutely change into another human being for the benefit of a company. And then it draws more money into your system, or courts, police, and God knows what else that could have been prevented if people were really allowed to live without being harmed. Now, sometimes, I apologize for this, I will do a little acting to see who needs mental health. Let me tell you who needs mental health. People who are not violent, people who are not hurting anybody, must be forced to take these pills. I cannot even believe how sick our society has become. Really, I wasn't going to speak about this, but that lady and the public needs to know that corporations have the right to hurt people with their drugs. And we aren't allowed to sue them. Why? We're homeless.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Mapes, then Andre Royster, then Juve Spooner.
Mayor, council members. I spoke to you last week about providing toilets for the Ahearn Street area.
Did you hear the announcement from Councilmember Harris earlier this evening?
I may start my speech here in a minute. Anyway, I see the reaction was to push the people out. The police, the Impact Team, has decided to come in there and cite everybody and push them out, and then they're going to throw away all their belongings. But what I wanted to talk to you about, and I want to keep on a positive note, is I couldn't provide the toilets because of permit process and finance. So I created a toilet out of an ordinary cooler.
Sir, we can't hear you if you're not in the microphone.
I created this out of an ordinary cooler. Includes hand sanitizer, six rolls of toilet paper, bleach, hand wipes, and I've deployed 10 of these in the Ahearn area. And the people that live there have found them to be very effective in providing some sort of dignity in a very undignified situation. And if you like to think about community, we're not here as a community to just enjoy our successes and our opportunities, but we're here to also face the challenges of our failures. And this is where I would like your participation. I've invested $500 in this project. If each of you members and the mayor provided the same type of investment, we could have 100 toilets out there in the field that these people can use. And they seem to take to the toilet in a way that you found that the outhouses were being destroyed. When this is their personal piece of property to take with them and keep themselves clean and separate from the sanitary problem, they are finding that this is going to be something that they can utilize on a daily basis. And they're not destroying them like you claim that they would claim to destroy an outhouse. Now...
Mr. Mapes, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
I'm hoping that you guys are coming out. Anyway, these are what I'm providing. $50 apiece.
Certainly, can we ask our homeless services team to connect with you? I'd like to certainly learn more about... I mean, you're being innovative, man, and thank you for being creative and innovative. I mean, it's... Okay.
Our next speaker is Andre Royster, then Juve Spooner, then Nishaya, then Christina.
Good evening, mayor, and all the rest of you members of the council. I've only been a resident of Sacramento for a year and a couple of weeks. Six months of that, I spent in 651 I Street Jail on a false charge. That's not what I'm here for. I'm here to talk about this toilet and what's going on at Ahearn. I went to jail Sunday morning by Sergeant Wallace, Detective Boyd, or Officer Boyd, and Officer Schaefer for actually grabbing three of those toilets that they were throwing away and said they were trash. And I told them that it was my furniture. I was out of jail by noon. Officer Boyd still has my ID. I had a conversation with Sergeant, or Officer Smith, today, and they're coming tomorrow morning to force us out and throw away more of our trash. So they say it's trash. It's our personal property. As a resident down there since August 13th with my release, you're going about this the wrong way. Somebody needs to tell Ms. Akala Woods, whatever her name is, that refuses to enforce the law that was passed by Boise State. Send an article in SNR.
The Ninth Circuit decision out of Idaho.
Right. And she refuses to tell your PD officers to stop pushing us out of there. I sleep there tonight. I sleep there every night since I got out of jail. I take care of my kids. I take care of my family. I take care of most of the people on the block. Everybody knows me, from K Street to down there. I'm constantly harassed by your police officers, many of them. I'm the same guy that spoke in Chavez Park to, I believe, Harris about toilets. I'm Andre Royster. The things that are being done by the police department on Ahearn are wrong, illegal, unfair, racist, especially towards me for speaking up. And tomorrow morning, if I have to go to jail again, I will, for the people that live out there, because the problem is not the homeless people, it's that mental health and deciding, are you going to treat mental health? Are you going to treat their drug addiction? They go hand in hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Royster.
I'm 47 years old and a father, so tomorrow morning, I need my ID back, and they need to stop doing what they're doing over there. Because if they do it to Ahearn, they need to do it to every person sleeping on the street, especially K Street and Chavez Park, because I used to sleep in front of the vampire team.
Thank you, Mr. Royster. Your time is complete. Thank you. Our next speaker is Juve Spooner, then Nishaya, then Christina Granham, and then R. Otisian. Spooner?
Long time no see. There's a saying, no matter who you are, if you kill someone, you are more the PC 187, cop or not, regardless, just remember karma is real no matter what. And you see how I said brothers born underneath my speaking slip, because... Can you put that up on the screen, please? Short and sweet, that's me and my close friends. The more my friends, the more brothers, because there's a saying, blood don't make you famous how you treat each other. Me, all of these are my brothers. I was raised with them. And granted, some of them are no longer with me, like my best friend, my brother Stefan, my little brother Daryl Richards. And there's a saying, like, you say you're here for the people, but yeah, you're not, because ever since I moved back in fourth grade, the homeless has been getting worse and worse. You said you're doing something about it, but yeah, I look outside these doors right now, there's probably more than 148 people out here sleeping on the streets. And we need to get more shelters. Forget building prisons and stuff, forget that. Let's actually do something for the people, because the people's what all of y'all are up in here for. If it wasn't for the people, y'all wouldn't be seeing where y'all at right now. And then there's a saying, though, too, for me, I'm almost done with college. And when I'm done in the spring of next year, short and sweet, in like a year, I'm going to do a federal job. It's either going to be a detective or whatever. But as like the saying goes, what goes around comes around. Scott Jones knows that too well, because he just lost somebody.
Okay, Juve, thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nishaya, then Christina Granham, then R. Otisian?
Octane.
Octane, thank you.
My name is Nishaya. Peace be upon all of you guys. You're my landlords. You're the people I have, I guess, grievance with. Been a tenant here at Ahearn for quite a while now, a few months. And at this point, I do not believe our eviction is lawful by any means. After 60 days of the police ignoring us camping there, we became tenants of will by their acquiescence. And so by not giving us proper, at least 30-day notice, you guys are in violation of quite a few state and federal laws. I'm not saying that having the camp there on Ahearn permanently is a solution, but giving such short notice when people have been there for months to years is completely inappropriate in this circumstance, especially when a majority of the people who live out there on Ahearn are looking for a way to safely live and survive. Majority of my neighbors are good people. Majority of my neighbors are not crazy. Or like, some of the words that are being used by that young girl's mother, vagrants, they have negative connotations. You know, we're people. Not all of us are ignorant of the law. Just not all of us are willing to be persecuted and do what we have to do to stand for what's right. But I would just ask that the council just be aware of the pending lawsuits that were filed because of this eviction. There was one filed on, I think it was October 5th, right here is the top here, is the federal lawsuit number. I believe they're asking for a judge to sign an emergency restraining order or injunction to stop the eviction. With that being said, I'd just say peace be upon all of you, and I hope that we can work together to solve this problem in the future.
Is there any way we can help you with housing, or any...
My particular situation is unique, because I'm a missionary. I pushed away commercial activity in housing to travel full-time and help the poor, the fadless, the orphans. And so in my particular case, what I found traveling is, there's nowhere for people who do not want traditional housing to reside in the current system, because it's not built for that. It's built for...
That's right.
You know, and so for a person like myself, who in this region just wants to have my tent in the trees, you know, sustainably, obviously, I'm finding it very difficult to live.
Thank you for sharing your story. Appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christina Granham, and then R. Octane. Is Christina here? Yes, okay.
Hi, I came this eve... My name's Jade Nicole, and I'm speaking for Christina. She's the young mother that had the crying baby in the audience. And she's a homeless...
Right there.
She didn't want to speak. She requested that I speak for her. And she's a homeless mother of two. She has a week in temporary housing, and she doesn't know where she's going to go after that. She wants to work. She is a college student. And there's a lot of mothers and women like her out in our community that need more help from the city.
So let us see if we can help her. She's here tonight. You're here representing her. Chris Conlon here in the back. Let's see if we can help her find something better, okay? It means something. You come down here and somebody goes down there, and by the way, the baby was incredibly cute. We want to help, okay? Thank you. We'll have Chris meet with her right now.
Our final speaker this evening is R. Octane.
It's you, sir.
Mayor of City Council.
I've heard a lot tonight about the homeless situation. I spoke on this topic about five years ago. years ago. Above your head, Mayor, is the Salinas, San Joaquin Valley. Half the food in America is grown in that valley. There are trailers with toilets, showers, and those that can bang metal pipes and kill. Kill takes effort and work. Picking vegetables takes effort and work. Now, this young man just spoke before me. He said he's not into condit—condit—transitional, you know—
You know, traditional housing.
Exactly, and a trailer with a shower and a bed in it, and outside farm work to be done, is not traditional housing. There is a place in you, America being the greatest nation on earth, the most powerful nation on earth, and California being the most powerful state and the most powerful nation, and what is the capital? You sit in that seat here in Sacramento. You can be the figurehead, the trailblazer for all the rest of California to take your homeless, those that want to work, and put them in these trailers and give them a small penance, because as the five—first five books of the Bible, the Torah, shalom, shalom, says, "If you don't work, you don't eat." So, it takes a lot of effort to bang a drum, bang a pipe. That's work. So, give—in those that want to—some are mentally to the point where they can't work, and they need their—their medic—medication. But those that can protest and stand and march, give them an opportunity to be in one of these trailers and—and have an overseer show them how to pick these vegetables, load them on the trucks to bring them to market, and then they'll have a self-respect. I don't know—well, I was going to talk on the water meter issue, but I'm not going to do that tonight. That's a different municipality that I may speak on in the future, but that's something—I thank you for your time. Something for you to think about with your colleagues and see if you could be the figurehead of it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. That's—that I—if I may, just the last word. I—this gentleman, I'm going to remember your testimony, because you're very articulate, and you seem like a very kind person who's trying to do, you know, something good in the world. I appreciate that. I just—for me, and I think this is what we grapple with here in our city, that we are compassionate. I know I've spent my adult and professional life fighting for our mental health services and fighting to combat homelessness. We have to do much more to help people who are on the streets against their will, who don't want to be on the streets. At the same time, we cannot accommodate it. I don't think a civil—a civil society can accommodate people choosing to live on the streets or the riverbanks, period. And so, the enforcement issues become difficult and controversial. I understand that. I'm not—I—I need to know more about the specifics here, but we cannot have people choosing to be homeless, if that's the choice. We can't have it, because there's public health, there's public safety, there's the impact on businesses and on residents, and that's where me, liberal, progressive, Mayor Steinberg, with all this history, draws the line here, period. And—and we're going to do our very best to help as many people as possible, but no, this is not going to be a place where people can camp, because that's their chosen lifestyle. I'm sorry. That's the way I feel about it. We're adjourned.